I invite people to be seated. And I invite people around the edges, please either be seated but stop talking so that we can carry on. Let us pray. Gracious God, we come to you today asking that you would bless us in the midst of our conferencing. God, we ask that you would continue to surround us with your grace and peace. God, we cast our cares upon you. All this in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen. The Wesleyan movement was born out of tension and dissension. They made fun of the Wesleys and even burned down their home. Jacob Albright, the great circuit rider of the Evangelical United Brethren Branch of our church, at one time rode into a community in Pennsylvania and began to preach the gospel. He began to preach the gospel with people who were already gospel believers. And in the midst of preaching the gospel, he also called the men in that community to treat women better and to particularly treat their wives better. The men in that community gathered together and beat up Jacob Albright within an inch of his life. He barely got out of town. When he got out of town, he got bandaged up and he went right back into that same town to begin to preach to those people. He was someone who wanted to serve God. The Methodist Church in part was formed at St. John Street in New York City. Now, the Methodist movement was a movement that helped to supplement other denominations. John Wesley never wanted us to be a denomination, and so they would gather together in their class meetings. Well, one day, one of the women came home from a class meeting and she found some of the men playing cards. And they were playing probably gin rummy or something, I have no idea. But they were playing cards and she was so furious that these men of God would be playing cards. And she realized, or she said, that the other denominations were not resourcing and not helping people to believe in God as they ought to, and that she said we needed to start a new denomination. Against John Wesley's desires, John Wesley never wanted us to become a denomination. At around the same time in Baltimore, Robert Strawbridge and other laity were going around serving communion and baptizing children. Now, John Wesley never wanted laity to be baptizing and serving communion. Again, breaking with the tradition, but creating tension and dissension that led to the United Methodist Church today. The formation of the Methodist Church occurred at the first General Conference session. It was held in Baltimore, Maryland in 1784. It was called the Christmas Conference, but it didn't get started out as the Christmas Conference. They were going to gather the first week of December for a few days to launch this new denomination called the Methodist Church. Well, when they got there, dissension and tension broke out. And they met all the way through Christmas. They planned to meet for a few days, they met for a month. Now, in that time that they were together, can you imagine that, coming to General Conference, meet for three days and be there for a whole month? But anyway. They broke again with John Wesley and what he wanted by launching a new denomination, but also John Wesley didn't want bishops if they did start a new denomination. I don't know what was wrong with John Wesley. I think bishops are actually pretty good. But again, at that General Conference, they broke with the tradition. They not only ordained Francis Asbury as a pastor, but the very next day, they consecrated him as a bishop. Since that first General Conference, United Methodist during general jurisdictional, central, annual congregational conferences have always had some tension and dissension. On several occasions, the church divided over, on several occasions, the church divided or organized differently. In the end, God has made a way for us to be a powerful voice for mission and ministry. We grew to be the second largest denomination in the United States and have a worldwide reach, building churches, schools, hospitals, and clinics. How did we do it? How did we get to this place? How did we become such a force for God? By trusting the leading and teaching of Jesus Christ. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust you, how I love you more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust you more. Let's sing that together. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust you, how I love you more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust you more. It will be the grace of Jesus Christ and our trust in Jesus Christ that leads us into the future. Our recent General Conference has deeply divided us, but no more than other past differences in the church. Things such as alcohol, tobacco, divorce, women in ministry, segregation, and slavery. We have not always gotten it right. And when we did get it right, it did not mean that our work was completed. No, it meant that we still had more work to do. While we reversed our vote on women's ordination, discrimination against women still continues in the church today. We have not fully addressed privilege, racism, and discrimination within our church. And so, when we take these votes and work on these different policies, even though the vote may change, it does not mean that hearts change. It doesn't not mean that there's an actual transformation that are taking place. The work we need to do on our differences, on full inclusion of women, African-Americans, and all people of all different ethnicities, is a lifelong journey of understanding, changing and addressing the systems that create and maintain privilege and oppression. Our concern and conversation about the LGBTQ community should not lessen our commitment to change and the change of the hearts and the minds of people so that we end prejudice, oppression, sexism, racism, and privilege within our church. In the midst of the present disagreement, I am proud and glad to serve in a theologically diverse annual conference. I'm glad for all of the diversity in terms of ethnicity. Our efforts like our 10-year plan for cultural competence and then the law to end segregation, the lawsuit that we filed to end segregation, are steps in the right direction. But there are still miles for us to travel. As we gather today, let us be mindful that a vote is not the destination. Transformation of hearts, minds, and systems is the long-term goal of every disciple of Jesus Christ. Here in GNJ, we are making tremendous progress. We are one of the top five diverse conferences in all of United Methodism. We speak nine different languages on a Sunday morning, and we have more than 150 multicultural congregations and more than 100 cross-racial appointments here in GNJ. You are a gift to the church. Let us continue to move forward in our giftedness to be light and hope for others. Let us continue to work toward bringing people together so that we can be a model for others. Now, let me say a word about what occurred at General Conference. There were plans and votes, victory and pain. First, there were votes on different plans. And one of the things that happened was the traditional plan rose to the top. But there were two other plans that were discussed and debated on the floor of General Conference. One was called the simple plan, which was to remove all the language about homosexuality from our book of discipline. That plan did not pass, but it got 40% of the votes at the General Conference. Forty percent of the delegates believed that it should just be removed from our book of discipline. The second plan that was acted on was the one-church plan. This plan essentially says, we have disagreement in our church, but we are all of God, and we all should be able to minister in different contexts. And so, it said, let churches and pastors decide who they will marry and who they won't marry. Let wards of ordained ministry and the clergy executive session decide who they will ordain and who they won't ordain. That particular plan was defeated by a very narrow margin in the committee, which meant that it wasn't going to go to the floor of General Conference. As a matter of fact, if the vote had changed by 28 people in the committee, which was a committee of all the delegates of General Conference, it would have passed and gone to the floor of General Conference. Instead, it came in as a substitute motion and was defeated as the substitute. And then the traditional plan. And the traditional plan was passed, as you heard earlier from our delegation. The traditional plan essentially says, maintain what's in the discipline, but also step up harsher penalties and greater clarity around people who are not following our book of discipline. This, these conversations at General Conference created for some what felt like a victory, but for others, what felt like deep pain. And in the midst of that, they, the General Conference, at different points, just went to prayer and to singing and music to try and heal the deep tension and division, not just within the General Conference, but within our denomination. I believe that nobody came away from General Conference feeling like a winner, that we all came away from that General Conference feeling like we all had lost something. One of the things that I'm deeply concerned about right now is that there is a lot of talk about the African delegations. And there's a lot of controversy, and there's even a lot of finger pointing and blaming the Africans for what has happened. I want you to know that what occurred at General Conference does not belong to any one group of people, or any one race, or any one theological belief. It belongs to all of us as a church. We are one body of Christ, and we are all in this together. I want you to know that in some of my conversations with Africans, but also with African bishops, there is deep tension within Africa right now. And there is actually a dividing of people in Africa about their beliefs and also about their respect for bishops. In leading up to General Conference, there was rhetoric about different groups of people and different parties, and there was rhetoric about bishops and how bishops lead, which created dissension between the bishops and their delegations. And one of the things the bishops, a bishop shared with me from Africa was that it creates great pain for him that his leadership has been undermined. And he has said to me, pray for us in Africa because we also are fraying at the edges. It was not only pain for the Africans, but also those who supported the traditional plan. They too felt and experienced a sense of pain. They felt called to vote as they did. And in their voting, they voted for what they believed God had laid on their hearts. But they also felt that they were the target of other people and concern of other people that diminished their own beliefs, their own values, their own commitments. And then, there were the LGBTQ community and also the allies of LGBTQ persons. And clearly, for that community, it felt like one more time they were turned away. And for one more time that the church did not value them. And one more time that the church was saying, you do not belong. Now, that may or may not be what was actually said, but you know, it's not always the words, it's what we communicate in what we do. And that was what was communicated. And particularly moving it to harsher penalties and stricter enforcement just said that things are going to get more difficult for anybody that wants to align and support the LGBTQ community. And so, people are very nervous and very afraid and very wounded in terms of who we are today. The reality is that the United Methodist Church is a big tent denomination. You've heard me say this before. Hillary Clinton and George Bush are both active United Methodist. George Bush and Hillary Clinton are both active United Methodist. We are a big tent church that welcomes all people under that tent. But big tents create big differences. And also, what we know is that culture is stronger than policy. So that we think by changing policies or putting new policies in, it's going to change people's values and belief systems. As I shared with you before, the change in a policy doesn't mean people are going to begin to act different. Or the change, or keeping a particular policy doesn't mean that people are going to act differently. Culture, values, beliefs are more important than policies. And that's very important for us, some of us, to understand. Because there are people here today that want to continue to say, the policy says this, and you should obey. I talked with a clergy person recently. He left the United Methodist Church. They actually took away his orders because he was a gay man. He went and he served in the United Church of Christ and had served churches there, and then he also served some churches in the Episcopal Church. He retired recently, and he said, you know where I'm going to church? To a United Methodist Church. And you know what he said? He said, I'm Wesleyan. I value the values of the Wesleyan tradition. I'm Wesleyan through and through. But I had to move into these other places because my values were not being honored. And so, one of the great challenges for us is to recognize that just because we put policies in place, it's not going to change hearts and it's not going to transform minds. And that when people don't feel valued, when people don't feel that their beliefs are being taken seriously, it only creates counterreactions and counterculture. And we are seeing that on all levels. For instance, how is it that those who supported the traditional plan supported pieces of that traditional plan that they knew were illegal? They knew were not enforceable, yet they supported that plan? Why? Because their values and beliefs are more important than the policies. We're going to engage in some holy conferencing here today. We've done this before, you've been a part of these conversations, but we're not going to have those same old conversations before. Here's how the same old conversations go. Microphone two and microphone three, please.
Why is it that we keep having the conversation about homosexuality? The Bible's clear about homosexuality, and for 47 years, the General Conference has voted and supported the current position of the United Methodist Church. Why can't you accept the Bible and the decisions of the church?
This is not the first time the church and General Conference have taken vote after vote to maintain a disciplinary standard relying on a handful of biblical passages. On some issues, votes occurred over decades. We have seen discrimination, marginalization, and even brutality supported and condoned by the church concerning slavery, women in ministry, and segregation that were supported by Bible passages and maintained over many more decades by voting by General Conference. If the church changed then, why is it taking the church so long to change now about homosexuality?
The church changed its position because Jesus in the New Testament taught differently about these matters than the Old Testament. Jesus instituted a new covenant and a new understandings, and the New Testament books taught differently about these matters.
Not really. Jesus never said anything about women and leadership of the church, and Paul said he would not submit to a woman's teaching. The New Testament not only permits slavery, but tells slaves to submit. The Bible talks about slavery more than six times more often than it talks about homosexuality, and never once says you shouldn't own slaves. If experience and wisdom prevail over biblical teaching concerning women serving as clergy and the biblical understanding is wrong for us today, why can't you understand this about LGBTQ people?
God is clear. One man and one woman marry. Homosexuality is a cultural change, and it's different from matters of women in ministry and how we treat people of different races. The church is succumbing to culture.
We agree if you call the teachings an example of Jesus as a cultural shift. We see it as being more faithful to the love and the understanding of Jesus.
All right. We're not going to do that today. We're not going to have that conversation. That conversation is a ping-pong match. Let's give them a hand, they did a great job there. A ping-pong match, every time one person serves something up, the other person serves something back. It goes back and forth, back and forth. No heart, no mind has ever changed through those kinds of conversations. People feel beat up and brutalized in those kinds of conversations, not just one particular group, but both groups. So that's not what we're going to do today. We're going to hear stories. We're going to hear your stories. We're going to share out of our own personal experiences of who we are and why we are. So I want to start with a first question. Share a personal story that informs how you experience or understand our church's current LGBTQ differences. So, it should come up on the screen. Share a story, a personal story that informs how your experience or how you, or your understanding of our church's current LGBTQ differences. Now, I want you to turn to somebody near you, not your spouse, not the clergy member from your church or the lay member from your church, but somebody different, and share your own story. We're going to give you a few minutes right now to turn and share with somebody else your story and how you come to that understanding. All right, friends, let's come on back. Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to hear a couple of these stories. So I'm going to invite you in just a moment to go to one of the microphones. You don't need to be recognized, I'm going to invite you to go to one of the microphones. And I'm going to ask you to share a story. I want to share with you two stories that I've heard as kind of a way to model this. Because we're going to try and hear a story, and I know it's very difficult, but in about 30, 60 seconds tops. Here's one story I heard on the Capitol District as I was meeting with the United Methodist woman. A woman stood up and said, I am concerned that if the discipline changes, if the discipline changes, my friend of 30 years is going to leave the church, and I would be deeply heard if my friend left the church. Here's another story I heard from one of our pastors. On Sunday morning, after General Conference, one of our members stood up and said, I have two daughters. One is heterosexual, the other is gay, is a lesbian. He said, in two weeks, my one daughter will get married, and she'll get married in this church. When my other daughter decides to get married, you won't let her get married in this church. That hurts me very deeply. Now, you see, we can share stories in 30 to 60 seconds, just one story. I invite you just to go to microphones now and share a story for yourself. Yep, just go to a microphone. Microphone number two.
My name is Obed Perez. I graduated through theological seminary in 2002. Felt the call to some sort of ministry. Never felt I could even be called to ordain ministry. As I was there, the 2000 church, the 2000 General Conference gathered, and I was very hopeful. And as you all can see, many, I don't, I mean, General Conference after, we're pretty much, if not in the same place, in a worse place. I, I am a gay person, I'm a gay man, committed to my husband, my partner. We've been together for 23 years, and... That's, that's my story.
Thank you, thank you very much. Microphone number three.
One of my close friends, friendship of over 20 years, came out to me 20 years ago. I was the first person that he came out to. And I've been trying to support him throughout that time, and he is convinced that the Scriptures reveal he is not to engage in homosexual practice. And he is trying to submit his sexuality entirely to the worship of Jesus Christ and walk that hard road, and I've been trying to be with him throughout that.
Thank you. I'm going to ask us not to applaud, that way we're not applauding for one and maybe not somebody else's story. Microphone number one.
My name is Barbara Batt, Chatham United Methodist Church laity. I just want to share the story of my friend Andrew. He was the son of our associate pastor when I was growing up. Very active in district youth ministry, he was always going to some church event, but knew from a young age that he was gay. And we are about the same age, so he's mid to late 50s now. By the time he was in his 20s, decided that he was unwelcome, and he left. And that has always hurt me very deeply. And I will just add a postscript that to this day, as many years have gone by, I always get a Christmas card from he and his husband, and he is the one who remembers my kids' birthdays out of all my extended friends. Always get a card. So, I just, we lost something special when he left this church.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Lynn Benson, centenary lady. We didn't have these language in the discipline always. We didn't have this language until the first General Conference after- after the Stonewall Rebellion, when gay people stood up and said, "We're not going to take it anymore. Stop beating us up."
Share your story.
Okay, my story is that the Holy Spirit called me to evangelism in the early 2000s. And the traditional plan is the death of evangelism. I cannot invite someone into my church when I know that they are going to be treated like a second-class citizen as far as being able to be ordained. The, this traditional plan calls for gay people to ignore...
We're not going to debate. We just want to hear stories. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're just going to hear a couple more stories. We're going to stay at microphone number three.
Thank you, Bishop Creed Pogue, Westside Millville. Back in 2015, when a new procedure was established for us to discuss the General Conference and some other resolutions, when we went back home to report, I heard from different people where people came up to that lay member and said, "Is it time for me to leave?" because they thought change was coming that was unacceptable to them. And I managed to discuss that with those people and say, "Nothing has changed yet." Period, nothing's changed. Unfortunately, in another small church, the person who had been the lay leader and his wife did leave. And they didn't talk to anybody ahead of time, they just left. And that's the part that makes me afraid because I saw what happened. We've seen what's happened with the Episcopal Church. And I'm just saying, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number two.
Chris Eckert, clergy at Haddonfield. I'm a very, very proud member of this conference. I did not grow up in this conference. I was commissioned in another annual conference. And I'm here because of an out gay man. My primary identity in life is as a guitar player. I have been since I was nine years old. I never wanted to be a pastor of a church. I always wanted to be a Christian Eric Clapton. It was a gay man who employed me and time after time, shared his gifts with this conference, with the General Conference. It was another gay man who helped me get a job at the General Board of Global Ministries and who changed my life. Neither of those men, even though they felt the call to ministry, could ever enjoy the privileges that I enjoy as an elder. I attended seminary with Obed Perez. He was much better in his classes than I was. He was a much better pastor and preacher than I was. And I'm very humbled and in many ways ashamed to stand here a clergy person. While we have used the gifts of my friends and colleagues, we have never respected them in the way that I have felt respected.
Thank you very much. No clapping, no clapping. These all are important stories and faithful stories. I want to move to the next question. There'll be opportunities to come to the mic, but we're going to take one more at microphone number one.
Thank you, Bishop. My name is Luana. I'm an elder in full connection, serving an appointment in Milford, United Methodist Church. My last appointment was in a non-parish setting. As an elder, I'm often asked to serve, to fill in for the pastor on communion Sunday, since I'm an elder, and to talk about the mission where I was. At one church, I was asked to fill in for the pastor on communion Sunday, where I was notified that a petition had gone around the church, that there was a girl who had been raised in the church, baptized in the church, confirmed in the church, but she'd come out as a lesbian, and the petition was to deny her communion. That if I was going to fill in on that day, that I would have to not give her communion. It breaks my heart to this day, and I declined to be there or to receive financial support for the mission that I was running from that church. Thank you.
I'd like you to now discuss, has anything changed for you because of the decision at General Conference? Has anything changed for you because of the decision at General Conference? Just again, share with a partner. Has anything changed for you since the decision of General Conference? All right, I invite you to come back. And again, I invite you to go to a microphone if there's something you'd like to share about what's changed for you or if anything has changed for you since General Conference. So I'd like to hear, just again, you did great the first time. Thirty seconds, I think we can get these in thirty seconds. What has, if anything has changed for you, what has changed for you since General Conference? Microphone number four.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
What's changed for me? Make it very quickly. I was at your conference when you had, and when I was there, they asked me, "What did I want from the Methodist Church and out of this conference, at your graceful conference?" And what I said I wanted was to be able to marry my spouse for twenty-five years. That's all I wanted, was to be an equal part of this church. What I take away from this conference is I'm still not sure if I still have a seat at the table and if I'm taking my chair back. And that's what kills me. Because I found this church, I found loving people and accepting people, but then there's also this people in this congregation who tell me I'm not worthy. And it was just reaffirmed for me. And that's sad, because there are wonderful people in this congregation. And I'm sad because I think I'm pulling my chair away, and I don't want to. So what's changed for me is, I don't know if I have a room at the table, and I'm sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
Melissa Doyle Wade, pastor at CIL City United Methodist. What's changed for me is I'm not going to be quiet anymore. I am a pastor. I'm also a mom of high school and college students. I have students sitting in my living room all the time who are struggling with their sexuality. My kids are very involved in the arts, so many of their contemporaries are homosexual. And I have kids sitting crying, thinking that they're not loved. They're not cared for. We have a generation committing suicide at a radical rate because we, the church, are telling them that God doesn't love them. That is unacceptable.
What's changed for you?
What's changed for me is I'm not going to be quiet and just sit and be polite and say, "Well, that's what we say." Because that's garbage, because our God does not throw people away.
Thank you, thank you. Microphone number two.
My name is Drew Dyson. I'm district superintendent of the Raritan Valley District, and I am the proud parent of two LGBTQ children. What's changed for me is if I now perform my two children's weddings, I will lose my clergy orders. What's changed for me is everything in that regard, and I will stay and fight. And unfortunately, what's changed for me is my children are walking away.
Thank you. Friends, I just want to say I've noticed something. And I sometimes see this happen when there's conversations like this, that one group really doesn't share what they're thinking and feeling. And that really doesn't help us as a whole body. And I want to say, we honor all stories and all thinking and all belief here today. Because that's the only way that we can be a community, be one body. I noticed in the last round of conversations that there were a couple of people who had a different perspective than most of the people that spoke. I want to encourage that. Because if we don't, we diminish who we are as the body of Christ. We diminish that we are one church, made up of many different understandings and many different beliefs and values. Microphone number one.
Bishop Ann Bill Kirby, retired clergy. I'm having trouble wanting to be in a big tent with people who want to punish me even more severely than they have tried to punish me before.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to go to microphone number two.
You said Perez, clergy, United Methodist Church of the Rockaways. A multicultural and reconciling church. And what has changed for me is that in our church, which I have been preaching for the six years that I've been appointed there, that it's a church for all people. All of the sudden, I have two candidates of ministries that are open lesbians, and they have been called. And I don't know what to say to them. I have been telling them, "Just keep following the call until something happens." But my message has been the same in trying to...
What's changed for you?
How to reach out to others. Because I don't want a homogeneous church. I want a church that I can preach for conservatives and progressives. I want that kind of church.
All right, thank you, thank you. Moses, I saw you go to the microphone. Did you want to speak? Oh, see, now there's a wise man. He says, "Three is all backed up. One has a clear path."
The one now?
Yes, one.
Moses Plomo, pastor at St. Mary's Street United Methodist Church in Burlington and African United Methodist Church in Trenton. What's changed for me? Nothing has changed for me in the church. Why do I say that? I'm a black man, and I'm still a black man.
Thank you, thank you. I want you to take a few minutes now to talk with each other. What do you need for your congregation or your ministry to continue to move forward of transforming the world, making disciples of Jesus Christ, and growing vital congregations? What is it that you need in order to keep moving forward, to transform the world, make disciples of Jesus Christ, and grow vital congregations? Share with each other for a couple of minutes. All right, I invite you to come on back. Again, you're welcome to go to a microphone. Come on back. Invite you to go to a microphone. Now, I actually think you can do this in fifteen seconds. All right, so just really crisp, clear. What is it that you need to keep moving forward toward our mission? Microphone number three.
I need to go back to February seventeenth, when our congregation was one, not of one mind, of many different minds that could worship together, love together, and move forward together in mission.
All right, thank you. Microphone number one.
Karen Sinclair Livingston, United Methodist. For my church, we would need, for each proposal in the traditional plan, a reference to the scripture that inspired that proposal and on which it's based. And also, for the entire traditional plan, a summary or some sort of notation that explains what traditions or what cultures are being upheld by the proposals that we are expected to adhere to.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, I'm Luann Cox from Portcalden, United Methodist Church. I think, in reality, if we knew the answer to this question, we would have full churches. Right now, we have...
So you need an answer, is that right?
That's correct. But right now, I think we have way too much competition between sports and every other outside, and there's not enough traditional, want to learn the Bible.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Yes, Robert Shotters, Sparta United Methodist Church. We, I think we might need, within our context, a different consideration of our tagline. Part of the questions that we are missionally...
What do you want to see changed? Or what do you need?
The language of the tagline. What we need is to perhaps embrace the fact that how can we transform the world when we're not able to transform our church? Or how can we be in part of the transforming process when LGBTQIA persons are not part of the conversation?
So how do we transform our own congregations and people? Yes, microphone number two.
I think just two things. Just need to know how we can continue to evangelize with guidance from board of discipleship or something along those lines. And second is, how can we maintain a connectional table with guidance from CFNA? And those two areas are very, very key. Keeping the relationship with God personal and also global at the same time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Melo Compt, centenary, Burlington. I'd like to see the church stop being so hypocritical. We advertise open hearts, open doors, open minds, and we're not doing it.
Thank you. No clapping. Microphone number two.
I think that in order for us to faithfully carry out our mission, we really and truly need to be inclusive. Whether that means inclusive of LGBTQIA persons or being racially inclusive, gender inclusive, there's a whole lot of other conversations that we're not having. But we need to be open to having and being a ministry with all people.
Thank you, thank you very much. We're going to take one more here. Microphone number three.
Just real quick, Bishop Creed Pogue, Westside Millville. We need to understand why Airbus is not running commercials against Boeing right now.
All right, thank you very much. Did you, microphone number four? Yes, microphone number four.
My, uh, my name is Deckback O'Wright, from Trinity Point United Methodist Church. Let's go back to the thing that says, "You are the church. I am the church. Together, all are children." Would you go back to the words without a frame? Would you work together as a church? There's no division, however. Would you heed what the Bible says? We are the church. We need to use that to transform the church.
All right, thank you. Friends, I want to share a couple of things with you, and then we're going to go to worship. First, I am deeply concerned about young people who are exploring their sexuality. And particularly, young people here in greater New Jersey, but certainly all around the world. And in particular, young people in our congregations. One of the highest suicide rates is by young people who are exploring their sexuality. This is where the church can make a difference. You passed previously legislation that said we would care for young people who are wrestling and struggling with who they are. And that there would be resources created. I'm happy to say those resources are created. They're going on our webpage. We'll be sending out an email about that. Grateful for the team that worked on that. Begin to look and ask, "How can we do this in and through our congregation? How can we also share some of these valuable resources with organizations and groups in our community who also connect with young people?" This is very, very important. I want to share a couple other things with you that people have been asking. There have been questions that have been coming about paying apportements. Are there ways to not pay apportements to support the traditional plan? Friends, what I would say at this point is, let's not make any rash and quick decisions. Let us continue to work together. You've done good work today in putting forth a commission. That would be something that that commission might actually think about and work on, and what does that mean? What I would say, and other people have asked me, "Should we not support our work in Tanzania?" And I would say, we should not discriminate against anybody. That's what this, that's what, you know, the people who are wanting to not give to Tanzania are also very concerned about our denomination discriminating. We should not discriminate. Let me also say, our work in Tanzania is actually changing people. Those who went to Tanzania last year know that our presence, the women who were there, helped to change the minds of the Tanzanians that took a vote while we were there on the constitutional amendment that they voted against zero to the, to every, I can't remember the number of people who voted, but it was zero, and then it just flipped the other way. And that was because of the work of our team that went to Tanzania and did teaching in the pastor's school. So this is not to a time to disengage. This is a time to engage. not to a time to disengage, this is a time to engage. This is a time to get involved. This is a time to be present. This is a time to share our stories, our testimonies of what God is doing in our midst. The second thing I want to share with you is questions about, what does it mean to be a one-church conference? Some people have been asking this. Certainly, this team that we've just empowered is going to work on that and think about that. I want to be very, very clear here today. We have LGBTQ people who are chairs of administrative councils, boards of trustees, staff parish relations committees. They are on staff in our congregations. They are engaged in many ways. We, I am not going to lead GNJ so that we go after people who are serving in our congregations faithfully and well, because they may be LGBTQ. That- That is only going to do more harm in the midst of our tension and dissension. Ours is not to do more harm right now. Ours is to explore and ask the question, how do we, in different contexts, honor different theological understandings and congregations? I need, I want our pastors to be pastoral. I do not want to take away from our pastors the opportunity to serve and pastor in ways that meet the context that they find themselves in. Being a one-church conference, in my mind, says that we need to do more work on that and what that means, but that we are not going to create more harm right now, in terms of our relationships with gays and lesbians in our congregations. And I want any of you who have laity in your congregations, who are serving in leadership, or may not be serving in leadership but active, I want you to tell the LGBTQ people in your, in your congregations that they matter to me, they matter to God, they are wonderfully made. And we may have disagreements on what that all means, but this I know, that God wants us to love the people that God sends to our congregations, and that we should be connected with them. And so I want you to share with them that I, as your bishop, welcome and are glad that they're there. What it also means to be a one-church conference is to recognize that there are people within our churches and within our conference who have a biblical view that may be radically different than others, and that their vote, their support of the traditional plan is a vote out of their own conscience. You may not agree with them, but they too are welcome in our churches and to the table of God. That to be a one-church planned conference means that we will struggle mightily about how we move forward in terms of the General Conference vote and the current realities here in Greater New Jersey. It will be messy, it will be challenging, but this I can tell you, God is with us. We do not travel alone. That God can see us through any challenge that presents itself to us, and that together, we can move through that challenge. And then people have asked, what does it mean when you say you're the bishop of the whole church? What that means is, I never, with the cabinet, look at any appointment and say, how do we want to change a clergy person? Or how do we want to change a congregation? That's never on our radar. What we ask is, how will this appointment maximize making disciples of Jesus Christ, growing vital congregations, and transforming the world? It is not about one theology or another theology. It is about how do we serve the mission that God has given us here in GNJ? What it means to be the bishop of all is that in the midst of our differences, that I will lead in ways that continue to create space and room for differences, differences of thought, differences of understanding, and that everybody has a place in that space, and that all of us can gather in that space. I want to be honest with you, it deeply concerned me today that I didn't hear more from our traditionalists. That, my heart aches, because in one way you said to me, this doesn't feel like a safe space. And if that's what you were thinking, I did not do my job well. This has to be a safe space, where we can talk and engage with one another without feeling like that we're going to be oppressed, or that we're going to be challenged, or we're going to be thought of in a particular way. That we have to create that kind of space, because all of you, if, whatever opinion you have, you got to that place because somebody created safe space for you to begin to think and, and act in that way. And so we ought to be able to do that for others. And so as a bishop, being a bishop of the whole means creating space for all, and that it's safe space, and that people can engage. Being a bishop for the all, the whole church, means that you can disagree with me, and you can disagree with my thinking, my strategy, my theology, my understanding, with my words, and I still see you as a person of God, and that what you are sharing with me is something God wants to say to me. I find it's in the midst of the difference, that when people talk with me, I more clearly hear the voice of God. And so, I want to be that kind of bishop. And I want to, want you to call and hold me accountable to be that kind of bishop. I want you to say to me, when you're not seeing me acting that way, when you do feel like I'm ignoring or, or not honoring certain parts of our community, because that's what's going to make me a better bishop. I also call you to be a disciple of Jesus Christ, who is United Methodist, to be a disciple for all. That you too would begin to ask yourself, how do I create safe space around me? That people can tell me whether I agree with them or not, they can tell me what they're thinking, they can confide in me, they can challenge me, they can push me. I want us all to become those kinds of disciples, because being a disciple is following Jesus Christ. And you know, Jesus didn't push people away. They may have had disagreements with Him, but He was always trying to draw people to Himself. And that's what I invite us to do, is to be on that kind of path and that kind of journey. We are not perfect, but as GNJ, we're pretty darn close. You don't know what I say about you. You don't know what I share with my bishop colleagues about you. You are special. You are not like lots of other United Methodists in conferences. You are special. Throughout the scriptures, God said to the Jews, "You are the ones who are called," and then always talked about what their responsibility was, and that they were called to be better. They were called to justice and mercy. They were called to act in ways that people saw God in them. So when I say you're special, I want you also to know that you are called to be different, and that you are called to continue to move forward, and that you are called to a responsibility, to be the Body of Christ, more than just a group of people with different ideas. Let us get to that place when other people look at us and say, "Oh, that's what Jesus would say? Oh, that's what Jesus would think? Oh, that's what Jesus would do?" You know, of the early believers, they never said, "Wow, look how they all think alike." They said, "Wow, how is it that they can love each other like that?" That's the responsibility that we've been called to, because you are special, and God has called us to a higher responsibility. Thank you for being United Methodist. Thank you for being part of GNJ. Thank you for the work that you do day in and week out in your congregations. God is not finished with us yet. God's got more for us. So let us keep working together. We're going to figure this out, and figure out how we can continue to move forward.